Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody.
Mr. Ward, I believe you're on.
Did you realize I was in the dark right from here? Not having attended meeting here, where do you sit?
Anyplace you want to.
Anyplace you want to, okay. Just don't know if they want to get the back of my head.
No, I don't want to be in the corner and be...
Get involved.
In the corner, Brian.
I called Tom last week and he's to get some information, which he kind of just gave to me today. And I told him I was going to stop in and discuss meeting that we had with the governor. On week ago Friday, Greg Eastman organized a meeting for economic development to discuss the governor who's coming and Taylor Caswell from CDFA was one of the organizers. So we tried to multi-pass us to spend 98% of the time on economic development and then 2% on something else. You have in front of you the caption that says, "Littleton needs economic growth." We then showed to the governor that in 1995, our tax base was 241 million. By 2009, it had rose to 794 million, a $553 million increase. And whimsically said that was during a genius period. And then since 2009, 2016, we've lost 52 million. So we're a lot less genius the last seven years than we were before. So we're looking at 52 million less in tax base. However, we did get good news and I'm going to pass out something to the board at the end. I don't know if anyone saw the Caledonian for more dam. The lawsuit that Eversource brought against 60 communities to change the way assessments done. This is pretty important move we made, as late in Robert wrote a... I think the story came out in the afternoon, Robert. You put a story together, it was in Saturday's Caledonian, and then Sunday of the Union Leader. So this is a major victory for us to maintain what we have for tax base, not necessarily... What was it, Robert? They were looking, Eversource, to reduce Littleton's from, what, 22 down to 11?
Yeah, about half, 22.
About half. So I mean, it was sizable, it was considerable. If we had, if the towns had lost, it would have had a major impact.
Is that the dam, Brian, or the utilities?
It is the utilities.
Okay.
But I guarantee you, if they had won, the dam would have used the 87F against the communities, which is where, you know, most of our tax base is. Now, one of the reasons where, which we told the governor that we're not having tax base growth was that from 2000 to 2006, we averaged 29 housing starts. In 2009 to 2016, we averaged four housing starts. 2015, our average, going to Peabody and Smith, sale of price of a house was 162,000, which equaled what we were selling for houses in 2004. And as bad as that is, there are communities north of here which are selling for homes half of what we're selling. So keeping it, not the worst. The next thing is basically some initiatives we've been working with Coles County on. Then the next phase is the capital investments, which we wanted to make a presentation to the governor to see that we've been a community that has worked very hard to take responsibility for its economic future. Obviously, the largest capital investment is within the hospital. Regional healthcare now over $56 million between the original hospital, the addition and renovations. The second largest expenditures we've spent is approximately $20 million for a different school building project. Which gave us the opportunity to say the first two times, and I'll get to the second time, was to lay out to the governor that our number one capital improvement we need to make is a replacement of Lakeway in the 10 to 15 million dollar range, and we don't have billy name. And so that's the biggest thing on the horizon for us. And then went through the different ones in which we've had over $145 million. And you guys can take time to look at it later, for capital improvements. But one of the biggest things is that for the industrial park, which was a $4 million expansion, the taxpayers put a million dollars into that, and that really was the basis of all of our economic growth since then. And it's for that million dollars, we've leveraged the law. The next one is the 1977 to 2017 downtown River District properties. We explained to the governor that he eventually did a tour of the River District, that there are literally 35 buildings who were no longer there, that were there in 1977, that different projects have removed them. And then basically saying that we've been working 50 years and that the meeting with the governor was held at Shillings. Just to be clear, there was no beverage consumed until possibly later. The next thing, wasn't me. The next one was the Chamber made their Power of One presentation and all the donors that had supported it. John Hennessy made the presentation on the River District and all of the partners that went on to that. And if you keep going through to the Downtown Littleton Reconnect Project, which is a sheet that basically talks about the funds that have been advanced. And it's important that, you know, many people, we've been fortunate to have some tremendous leadership to come in our community. And if you look at the U.S. Economic Development Administration, a million dollars, that is for the River District. The EDA has only funded two River Districts on Eastern Seaboard in the last 25 years. The other one was in Port Main. And that million dollars came because of the credibility of the industrial park. In addition, if you look at, maybe you know the block plans, there was a half a million dollars that was raised, excuse me, from CDF tax credit funds. And these were funds that apparently haven't been available, but were raised from, by LAFC for that project. The next thing is Greg made a presentation, which I basically covered as far as the industrial park, about the $4 million, what we have. And then we go to the last page, which is the thing that you guys are most interested in. We made a presentation for our priorities and basically came back a second time to Lakeway. And with Lakeway, we said it was in 10 to 15 million dollar range and that there is no billy name. However, a suggestion was made that the state dedicate sweepstakes money, which has been in place since, well, like 63, 64. Steve, we were the first state to have a sweepstakes, to have titties, and all of the funds have always gone for education. Now, we spent $50 million for a dedicated fund for renewable energy projects. We spent millions of dollars for transportation projects, all good projects, but we currently don't have. So the push was made to the governor to come up with a dedicated funding source, and sweepstakes money was what we suggested. In addition, there is other projects, obviously, to an F may complete the industrial park, 68 to, excuse me, the River District, 68 to go face forth for the industrial park and a series of other things. What I'd like you to do, if you could, is because we raised it with the governor, if the school board, working with your superintendent, could write a letter, follow up to the governor, and lay out a narrative in the history of Lakeway, which is 67 years old, has had five additions, it's beat, it doesn't, what it's been, was designed for is not the education it delivers now, and request the reasignment of billy name, and then follow up on what we've said about coming up with a dedicated source, which could be sweepstakes. If you were to write that letter to there, that would follow up on the meeting and it would be hearing it from you, as school board, with your narrative as to why you want to do it, why you have to do it, and talk about the building. You know, that is, you know, traditionally, an elementary school lasts about 50 years. That's, and because it either becomes outdated because it was built for a different educational plan, or it just gets worn out. Well, with us, we got both. So if you were to put a letter to the governor, I've also spoken to Greg. Many people, because we're all neighbors, some people, you don't realize the power or the credibility that certain people have. Greg is looked upon as the most credible and successful economic development person north of Coles County. He's a go-to person. And LAFC will write a letter of support. I spoke with Andrew Dorsett, the town manager, he will write a letter to support. I think if you ask your three local reps to write a letter of support, to show a united front that Lakeway is a priority and urging the state to provide some leadership with it. So anyways, that's my pitch, and I know you guys have got a full meeting, but I want to pass out something to you. I thought it was pretty neat. There was a second story that showed up on Saturday, in addition to Robert's story. Okay, let me pass those out. And that's where Business from Hampshire listed, and they called it, hot office in industrial parks. There were six parks listed, four of them on the Seacoast, Nashua, and Littleton's. And this barely just came out to show you the credibility that we have in our industrial parks. So this story just came out, and so that's good news. And then the other thing I'm going to have to pass out is Robert's story, leading back to the dam. That is something that any of these school board members wants to monitor closely, because the dam is our largest taxpayer, and this lawsuit had a real potential. Do you need more coffee? So anyways, you guys have got your homework here to do, but if you can, write a letter to the governor and then have Steve coordinate with other partners within the community. Don't guarantee it will work, but it's better than doing nothing. And it's something that you can say in a positive manner of laying out what the need is. And we explained to the governor that we don't have 10 to 15 million dollars sitting around, that we do things in small bites, and explained to the governor, the last three years, we've done three bond issues. We've built a new town garage two years ago for 1.3. We spent $900,000 for the River District bond, and then there's a $2 million sewer upgrade that was passed this year. We do things in smaller bites because of our ability to pay and then we are in North Korea. I think that resonated. I think he understands that we're a community that takes responsibility for its future, but we still need partnerships with the state. So if you can follow up with the letter, I think it could be helpful to start a further dialogue. So, thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? If not, I'll sit down.
Thank you.
Okay, next on your agenda is sixth grade students step up.
Just a minute, excuse me, guys.
Oh, no, they can go ahead. That's fine. I just wanted to bring up the eighth grade field trip. I haven't heard anything back yet.
Yep.
And I'm just still concerned. I know it's this Friday, but they're just doing Littleton for a field trip still, is that the case?
They are, and with the time constraint, but I have talked to administration at the high school, and they would get a trip early next year as ninth grade. I know that's not ideal.
So they'll have two trips next year?
They'll have two trips next year, one to begin the year, one to finish. To make up for the one that they traditionally would have taken this year as eighth graders at the end of the year.
Okay. Will you inform the parents at some time, or is this just...
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, sixth graders, you're on. So I would like to introduce four of our sixth graders. We have Paul Shea, Olivia LaGou, Nolan Clark, and Joe Woodson. And they would like to address the board members and the superintendent.
Thank you for the line. I speak of the school board meeting tonight. As you know, we are sixth grade students, nearing the end of our times as students at Lakeway.
We are looking forward to the next chapter in our lives as middle school students. However, we will not forget all the fond memories we had at Lakeway.
We would like to thank you for helping to provide us with valuable educational experiences we've had so far and for the ones we know are yet to come.
Next Tuesday night is our stepping up ceremony. You'd be honored if you would attend in this special occasion. Visit, accept our invitation, and join us as we step up to become seventh graders. Thank you.
Let's go check out, guys.
It was a clear?
Okay. Well, I'm way more nervous than they are. Anyway, first of all, I just want to thank you for allowing me, first of all, the opportunity to have been able to take this amazing adventure and also to share with you. So I will try to keep it brief, but I think I just want to start with the part with the kids, because I think for me, that was really exciting when I got back. When I left, I left them in charge with a web quest that they had to do to research. They had three different tasks and they had to work in a group of three, three and four. And it was going to be up to them how they were going to present it and how they were going to gather their information. And on a web quest, you generally are given tasks and you're given sites to go to to research the information. They not only did these boards that I brought over, but they also, most of them did along with a slide presentation. So again, it was up to them to decide what was the best way that they would like to present their information and go about researching it. And they researched three different aspects, the culture of Nepal, the present state in Nepal and all that, the climate and terrain of Everest, and then they had to, after that knowledge, they had to, as a team, come up with a plan of how they might summit Mount Everest. And there's a couple of routes they had to choose and they had to agree upon, and then decide how long it was going to take them, what they needed, and so on and so forth. And so with that, the whole idea, what I was hoping that they would gain, not only from what I brought back, from my knowledge of, first of all, the understanding of a third world country, that life is very different than what maybe they're used to, and the idea of teamwork, how important that is. I know that on this trip, it was vile. I didn't summit the mountain, but even just getting to base camp, we had a few issues that we ran into that were ultimately pretty severe. And so that, I hope they got that understanding with it too, as well as the idea that you can go and achieve the things that you want to do if you set out. And now I have to get this screen back on.
Just move your mouse, Liz.
I don't have to hold on to this.
No.
So I'm going to go through these pictures. I'll try to be brief, but it's not too long. There's some interesting things. I tried to get a stamping across the board, so that it's not just all business, because Kathmandu is a pretty wild place. I had to navigate it all by myself a couple of times, and it's kind of scary, because traffic is just doing everything. Nobody waves, stops, waves, and smiles, as you do here in Flat Town. So, so just to start out, we were staying at the Yakinetti to begin with, and this was a pretty beautiful hotel. It's smack in the middle of Kathmandu, and those, that was some probably Tibetan monks. And I'm still curious about, because it was a family, so I, you know, they're not truly monks then. But, and we were very comfortable in here. We, until we entered out into, into Kathmandu, and you can see, this is just a small amount of the traffic and the amount of garbage and the pollution is one of the top polluted countries in the world, as many of you may even know. And dogs and things and cattle everywhere. And just to go back to that, I was, the reason I put this picture in was because it was such a healthy, healthy animal. And then there's also the monkeys. These monkeys were constantly taking the produce and whatnot from, from this woman, and it was quite funny. So we were on the way to what was called Monkey Temple. And if you see here, all of these wheels on the side, those are prayer wheels, and there's 108 of them, and that represents, there's a lot of numerology, you know, and different religions and whatnot. And Amen states, Om Mani Padme Hum, which is the prayer of compassion. And Buddhism is the big religion, the most prominent religion in Hinduism, which they're very, very similar. And the ideas, you'd walk by and rotate them clockwise, you know, repeating the prayer, Om Mani Padme Hum, Om Mani, Om Mani Padme Hum, along with any prayers that you want to do. And that's what this gentleman is doing. This is a giant ones, and it was really neat, because you'd get walking around, and again, you'd walk around the other end of the tops. Om Mani Padme Hum, so getting meditated following, they're both spinning, it was really quite Here we are at the Monkey Temple, and that is the monastery. And I just thought that juxtaposition of it would be solar panels on the top, which was interesting.
Very interesting.
So, and I was very, so there's quite a few Tibetan monks that are here and have established themselves there because of all that's going on as a safe haven. This is a school called Thangka, and that is a type of painting, and that, what they're painting is the story of life according to Buddhism. It's just the process of life, basically. But they're very strict, there's a very precise way of painting, and that has to be done, very, very tight rules. And here is the 108 stairs to get up to Monkey Temple. So the prayer flags are everywhere. The religion is a really powerful religion there, and the people are, as much of chaos that's going on in Nepal, and yes, both our credit cards were stolen, and they may not have been from Nepal to pay, we're not physically, but the people are so kind and so sweet, and it's really amazing, really amazing. So this is Monkey Temple. So if you look back at the big temple in the background, those are all called stupas, and the big ones are stupa, and the smaller ones are stupas too, and they're just religious things that are sacred. And if you see on there, the eyes of Buddha, and so Buddha, like Christ, was a very real person. He left his family because he wanted to seek out compassionate world, and when he realized that it wasn't there, he decided that that was going to be his life goal, like, very much like, like what Jesus Christ did. And he came from a very wealthy family and left all belongings behind. And so when he couldn't accomplish it, there are all the stories go on to talk about, you know, what he did and how he regrets about that. But those eyes that you see, and they look to us, if you don't follow the religion, they look a little funny, a little different, but those are meant to be the eyes of Buddha, always looking down on the whole path of right, right action, right, right talk, right, you know, behavior, and so on. This is called a jirgri or thunderbolt, and again, it's the same idea, that idea of ongoing infinity of power, of strength. And I just thought that was great. There's the monkey, once again, you know, the rice that people leave behind. And I threw this, started to throw pictures in like this again, just to show you the intensity. I mean, these buildings are just, it's like a Lango Palace. And the earthquake, you see the devastation from the earthquake that hit several years back, and I'm not, I can't believe that this whole city just didn't get weathered in dust because it is built out of just broken stones and, oh, it's just amazing. Back to school year down there, and of course, their first election was coming up, and from what I understand, something was going on about that. Our guide was explaining it to us. The traffic is insane there. We had to actually get out of the car. So we're at another temple of sorts, and they have animals that they're offering, and there was this goat, and that's what, that pink stuff on his head is actually an angel of sorts, that it's a blessing. So, and the crazy thing was, is he just stood there, like he was drugged, I thought. And the other crazy part was, is how comfortable people were barefoot, because I threw away my shoes when I got home. It was tough. It was very intense to be out in Kathmandu, and at the end of that day, we went back, and we had to be briefed by our guide to start hiking the next day. And I almost didn't go. I said, I don't know if I can do this. I was just so overwhelmed. Yeah, there's a goat. This is an interesting part. This is a really intense part of it. You guys, I've shown this to, they've seen most, I've shown them 400,000 pictures. But if you look in the background, that's Khobhasadhu, that gentleman there, that's all been orange, and I'm going to, you're going to get to a close-up soon. Here is a part where you go to where they do the cremations. So they're very comfortable with death. Death is a very, very honor in Buddhism and in Hinduism. And so the cremations are public. And if you look here, this side, they're getting closer to the monastery, so these would be more expensive, so if you were more well-to-do family, it would be where these sections are. And here, we were lucky or unlucky enough, there were four going on, we were there, and it was extremely overwhelming. And you'll see, there they are, that gentleman down there towards the water, and the family is sitting up on the steps by that red building. So there's a cremation going on. And notice the river, filth in the river. And when they're done, they just push it into the river. And it takes about three days for all of this to happen. And the family comes and goes and, you know, honors it. So they do have pretty interior cremations that run the other side, but this was pretty intense day for me. This was, these are the sizes. And what was interesting is that in many of the pictures, I was all smiles and lit up, and I was having a grand old time. But you'll notice my face here, because I didn't know if we were mocking, or if they were real, if they were a fraud, because they would bless us, and if we photographed them, of course, we had to, just like if you're in New York City, and you know, the naked cowboys out there, you get your picture taken with them, you have to give them a buck or something. So I had a hard time with this, because I do take religion very seriously, and I didn't quite know where it was going. So they, Asada is somebody who gives up all of their belongings and everything, and they live a life of not owning anything. And with that, community is meant to support them, either bringing them food, just like many different monks and things. So you can see, you can see that, we're on the far right, in case you didn't know. My friend's son-in-law said, he goes, oh, he couldn't pick you out in that picture. But notice how my face is very like, I would not like to be in that. So it's very interesting. I'm not fully aware of what the makeup represents, or that the chalk that represents, but they don't cut their hair for the most part, everything. Just another gentleman on the other side. So this is the next day. We ironically were supposed to fly into Lukla, one of the top three most dangerous airports in the world, and at the last minute, we got, he said, we gotta go right now. We gotta go in helicopter. So my friend that I was with was more excited about going on the helicopter than than the whole trip. But this is what I wanted to show you, but you guys have seen this. This is flying out of Lukla. So I was in a helicopter waiting. I stuck this in ahead of time, and I'm just going to run it a little quickly. Now it drops off right there, where he goes up. So if you don't go up, you go down, and that's it. And they only have a few flights in the morning because of cloud coverage and whatnot, and so if you can't get in, you know, and coming in, you go the other way, and if you don't stop, you're going to hit that wall. They have to rev their engines at high, high top speeds and then take off, because the runway is not, not very long at all. Not at all. So I was really glad to be in a helicopter. This is the inside of a teahouse, so we are in Lukla right now, and they all pretty much look like this. At first, we were really excited, and then by the end, you realize you've been eating pot ramen for three weeks and hot lemonade. So the food, you don't go for the food, that's for sure. We were really told not to eat meat along the way, because chances are, it's spoiled, because it has to be carried up on the back of a yak or a porter. And again, animals are just everywhere. So this is an idea of what the trail looks like. It's pretty wide, you're walking... You're walking, it's not difficult, it's the altitude that really knocks your socks off. And again, the yaks. These are a crossbreed of a yak. It's not, it's like a cross between a cow and a yak, which are in the lower levels. As you get up to the top, they're just yaks. Just the vegetable barbs. They pretty much grow potatoes up there. Not much else, mint, maybe, not a whole lot. Here is another wall there, and we found out, we learned you had to pass on the left going up, and then come down on the other side. Again, that whole clockwise kind of thing. And again, that is the Om Mani Padme Hum, and there's 108 of those stones there. And they're along the way, and even you can see the carved out, it's all carved, and it has a whitewash over it. They're really beautiful. There's another one further up, and that's just carved out of a rock. Here's a picture, I wanted to just demonstrate the number of people that were on the trail. There were times where you were just stuck in traffic. It was ironic. There's so many people doing this right now, which is a good thing from Nepal. I'm sure you all heard, there's several deaths recently. Ironically, the last four, they were saying they were up there from last year. I highly doubt that, because, you know, Nepal was trying to hide that. The gentleman that put our trip together actually knew that the gentleman that fell had to claim the body, so it was a pretty intense time. And these are the suspension bridges, and they're up, I'm really, really bad with height, but they're really super high. And this was a tough one to do, all of them were really, there was about six or seven of them, but it's really, really hard when there's a team of yaks coming at you. But if the yaks are in front of you and with you, they kind of help stabilize it. So there you go, there's some horses crossing. And the river, the Kumbh River is down below. Here's the Kumbh River, and it's got this beautiful blue color, because it's all river water, and that's just in the valleys. And again, just kind of looking up. We're headed to, I believe, Namche here. Not yet gotten, that's Namche. But a lot of them outranges, I cannot remember the names of, just because they're so foreign. This is looking down at Namche. This is the army base in Namche. And this is the Alguenthi school that we got into in Namche. And this was a school that was put together for the children of the Sherpas that were killed in the avalanche, not too long ago. And we were lucky enough to get a tour. The children in Nepal are just beautiful, they're just so sweet. And here they are washing up for lunch. So the children hike down the mountain, it takes them about an hour to get there sometimes, walking. There are no cars up there, obviously. And they're in school all day. Most of the schools are run by moms, not really teachers. This allows them to be able to care for their own children. And here they are, they're having lunch. Some of them walk back home if they're close enough and having their lunch, and some stay here. It was a typical classroom, I think this was a kindergarten or first grade, and this one little boy kept walking me around, and going, showing me his backpack, and, you know, whatnot. They weren't super comfortable with me taking pictures of the kids, so I tried to honor that, they're all out having lunch. But you can see, they really don't have much. And this was funded by an American expedition company, the Alpine Ascents International. That is our, geez, I'm not sure if that is our first sighting of Everest, but I think it is. And there's another stupa. And these are all along the way, and they're generally pointed towards sacred mountains, and most of the mountains are sacred. Just looking back at the trail here, to give you a sense. Grottedendrins, there's certain terrain is really interesting. There are all these grottedendrins, a lot of them are just getting ready to move while we were there. This is a typical spot where we would stop for tea. And that tea there, that's that, I was thinking, oh, this tea has this lemon, it's so good, I'm going to make this morning tea for us. Every morning we'd get home, it was lemonade, powdered lemonade, and it's out one, and I'd go, ah! So this, this is a bathroom, and generally, there were just a hole in the ground, and this one was quite frightening. Actually, I was excited at first, I thought, oh, good, leaves are on it, at least it might be cleaner. And then I kind of looked down the hole, and it was a complete drop-off, and it was applied to the floor, and I thought, dear God, if this thing gets wet, I'm going to And that's just a view of the morning of the mountains, sun's coming up. So there's all these little houses that are, you know, with stone walls. As you go up higher and higher, we're pretty much at, I think we're at about 14,000 feet, give or take. And during the monsoon season, they bring the animals up out of Kumbh Valley. There's a yak, just taking it easy. Sometimes the animals, with the porters and carrying the stuff, they just get tired, they just sit down, and they have to leave them there, and they go on, move on. This is a typical porter carrying a light load. So they carry a minimum of their pounds on their back, you know, and walk up. So as we get up higher and higher, the terrain, obviously, it just starts to be, it's like you're on the moon. Another one of the stone houses that they come up. I had to get a picture of that, I never blend. We were at Lohpichay, which is the second to the top before Gorashep, which is go from there to base camp. And Dingo Cheng, up and down. And behind that is Amadabul, which was far prettier than Everest. So I have to say, seeing Everest was fine, but everything else was very deserted. That was pretty much our water intake every day, so hydration was huge for altitude acclimatization. And we also took a product called Diemox to help us out. This is up in Lohpichay, and it's like being on the moon, and people live up there, and you don't understand how, and there's no letting hot water, and there's no waste, place to put waste, and there's no place to put the garbage. It has to be carried out. There's a huge movement now, hopefully, going on there, and try. Again, there's no infrastructure in the whole place. I thought this was quite funny, because at the very top of Gorashep, they had an oxygen tank there that said, we have oxygen service, and then underneath it, they had a advertisement for whiskey. Come up perfect. You couldn't drink alcohol, they, you know, it's not good to do that, so. This is looking at Everest. So Everest is there in the back, and this is all glacier that you're seeing, which is Gorashep. So if you looked around the corner on the left side, that's where Everest Base Camp is. We unfortunately didn't get to base camp. My partner that I was with came down with altitude sickness. We thought he was going to acclimate. What I learned from these guys, from their research, is how severe it was. He was in really bad shape. So we stayed the night at Gorashep. Again, I was out, kind of winding around, he was, you know, just inside and sleeping. Those are all glaciers. That's looking down at Gorashep. We had a big snowstorm. We did try to head into base camp, but it was snowing, it was white-out conditions, and he couldn't do it. We got 15 minutes in, and he just said, I can't do it. So what happens when you get, you guys remember some of the things that happen when you get altitude sickness?
Dizziness.
Yeah? Headaches, yeah. And brain swelling, and you're a little bit confused. So the next day, we realized we had to head back down. And one way you acclimate is to go back down, rest a little, and try to go back up again. But unfortunately, though, this is back down, the town below, it was only getting worse, and it wasn't getting better. So we did have to end our trip a few days early. We were helicoptered, air-vacked out. This is just somebody doing their laundry. So that's why you don't drink the water, because they're doing their laundry, the yaks are in it up above. This is just some of the filth that I saw up there too, just to, just while it was ironic. This is, we were being air-vacked out, and just looking out of the helicopter, down at the trail, and then ending up in the hospital. So that, he ended up being in the hospital for about four days, but it still was amazing. I mean, it was a little frightening, that part of it, but it was an amazing experience. Again, I hope that I was able to bring back some information for the kids, but I also thank you so much for this phenomenal experience that I had.
Can you teach her?
Okay, next on the agenda is fifth and sixth grade team leader schedule changes.
I'm going to present that. The fifth grade, next year's fifth grade team is here with me, Tracy Howard, Karen Anderson, and Louise Zusek. So they're going to chime in when I forget to say something here, because I forgot about that. This current year, Mel is over there right now. Mel will be the coach next year, but she's a current sixth grade teacher. They are departmentalized, which means there's one teacher that does math, one teacher that does language arts, and one that does science and social studies. And given our dynamic for next year, and the need to increase math scores, and hone in our instruction, the fifth grade team is also going to be departmentalized next year. So Louise will do science and social studies, Karen will do math, and Tracy will do language arts. The sixth grade team will look a little different. Deb Pliss will do science and social studies. Danielle Whitcomb will be doing math, and she's a former middle school math teacher, so she has the experience there. Oh, and Donna McCusker is moving up from fifth to sixth to do ELA. So what this does for our two teams, we've rearranged the schedule a little bit, and with the personnel that we have in each of those positions, we now have highly qualified people in math and ELA. Both Louise and Deb have gone to some trainings, and we will continue to provide them with the trainings for, help me out, Project Leadaway.
And next gen.
And next-gen science. So we're really going to hone in our instruction, and having teachers focus on one academic area is really going to increase their opportunities and what they provide students. They'll be able to differentiate a little bit better, so leveling students and giving them where they are and moving them forward. If you're only having to focus on one academic area, your abilities to do that greatly increase. We've also adjusted the schedule to provide the fifth and sixth grade team with common planning time, so our fifth and sixth grade math people can meet together, you know, in ELA and science and social studies, so that curriculum planning and development over time will really be more cohesive. We can make sure that we're aligned with the curriculum and not missing anything or overlapping our instruction. Amy's not here, but she's agreed to help us out with this, so that there are three classrooms of fifth and three of sixth. So in order to make this work, we had to add a special. So what we did was we added a technology special. So once a week, once every six days, because we'll be on a rotation, Amy Cott will provide direct instruction in regards to technology for our fifth and sixth grade population. So she's actually going to begin digital portfolios with them at that level, if they can take with them to the middle school, which is going to be really huge, because I think down the road, that's probably where we're going to be going K-12, but it just kind of gets that started up. So that's sort of the instructional piece and the rationale behind that. In addition to that, we have an obligation to prepare these kiddos for middle school. And I think, recognizing that sixth grade this year, working on it, and dropping that down to fifth grade, we're going to better prepare our students for middle school. With the help of Friends of Lakeway, we will be purchasing binders. So each homeroom will have their own binder, their own color, so we'll not get stuff lost, definitely won't be left in the hallway and door. But we're planning the transitions very strategically. We're also going to teach them how to be organized. So something that I've asked the teams to work on is actually demonstrating how to maintain an organized binder with your work for different classes, because that's the expectation when they get to middle school. And I think somewhere along the way, we just expect them to know how to be organized, but unless they're taught those skills, they really don't have them. You're not, those aren't natural things, being organized. Somebody needs to coach you through that. So together with fifth and sixth grade team, we're going to begin that process. And oddly enough, the binders that they were looking at are very expensive. So thank you to Friends of Lakeway for offering to help us out with that, because it wasn't something we were taking on. So that's really where we're at with that piece. Sixth grade sort of piloted it this year, and had some really good thoughts on how they could improve it for themselves, which definitely helped the fifth grade plan for that piece. I just think the common planning time, that collaboration that we're going to be able to provide teachers, it's going to be huge. Mel, as the coach, will be able to meet with them as fifth grade teams, as sixth grade teams, together and in their subject areas. So we're really going to be able to fine-tune that instruction, and hopefully boost up some of those math scores that we're struggling with a little bit. I'm sure I missed something. Did I? I might have at all. Do you have any questions? So the letter that was, that you have, a copy of, will go home in report cards with their homeroom teacher's name. So one thing that kind of came out of this year is who is the go-to person. So we're going to clearly explain to parents that whoever their homeroom teacher is, is their go-to teacher for questions, comments, concerns, conferences, that sort of thing. And we're really expecting this to be successful, really hopeful that it will be, but I think we have the people in the right places to make that be successful, especially academically. And I think when you can hone in your instruction and make it more engaging to students, we're going to see a lot less behaviors. That's my goal at that level, to just really engage them in their learning and have them, you know, become expert learners, because we're going to have staff that are going to be experts in that field as well. And I think, we talked about this at the team leader meeting, which is K through sixth teachers, and everybody was really excited, and felt like this was the direction we needed to go with our instruction.
I think as a team, I think we're all very excited to be able to do this. We're all teaching to our strengths. And we also have a passion for the strength, you know, for the area that we're teaching. And I think that's going to translate to the students, and we'll be able to do a lot more hands-on type of work, and we'll be able to collaborate a lot more. I think it's going to be a really good thing next year, and I think it's going to generate some enthusiasm in the grade. So that's our hope and our goal.
I do too. Are there any other schools in the area doing this?
I know some schools do a hybrid model of this in fifth grade and sixth grade, you know, perhaps they'll switch for one subject area, but they'll have, you know, they might go somewhere else for math, and just switch for the math. We've actually been grouping for years.
Whitefield Elementary.
Yeah, they did the hybrid.
I think they have for fifth and sixth grade, so one teacher does both fifth and sixth grade math, one teacher does both fifth and sixth grade ELA, both fifth and sixth grade science, and then both of those.
I think it's great.
So we're going to be able to pool our resources a little better. I just, I think this is a good direction for us to go, and especially if you think about the developmental level of the students, you know, sixth graders are really kind of, they already have one foot in middle school, but we don't allow them the opportunity to sort of feel that way. So I think we really have an obligation to better prepare them for middle school and high school. And we can't just think K-six, really. We have to think pre-K-12 when we talk about students.
Good job. So can you give us a report halfway through the year?
I sure can. Speaking as a sixth grade team, and again, speaking to you too, is that we're able to go a little bit deeper in each of our areas, because you're not going to get to every area of the curriculum, you know?
I think for planning too, it can be very difficult at that, the upper grade level, upper elementary, you can do all that planning and correcting when you're doing it for all subject areas, and it can become cumbersome, and, you know, I think when you're fine-tuning your craft and just focusing on one area, you can really dig deep in there and make a difference.
It's more time on task for students as well, because there's fewer transitions in the day, so we'll have nice, large chunks throughout the day where we're actually teaching, and the students are engaged in hands-on activities versus going back and forth down the hallway and stuff.
I mean, we adjusted the overall building schedule just by a few minutes to make it work. And thanks to Tanya Patterson, who's not here, she's kind of the scheduling guru, so she was able to figure out that if we added five minutes to their special all year, they don't maybe be losing two specials over time, you know, but they're actually adding a sixth. So I think the kids are going to get a really enriched academic year with this, and I think having a technology course for them is very appropriate. They're very good with technology, but I think some of the topics to cover too are safe use of technology and that sort of thing too. But we got to get ahead of the game, because they're pretty far ahead of us with technology already, so.
So the next item on the agenda is approval of the May 15 minutes. Do you hear a motion? Do you hear a second? Any questions, errors, or omissions? If not, I'll unfail her.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Business report. Business report, let me ask this, going around, you have a silent, and then you have Dave Bigger and some Pittsburgh.
Evening, everyone. My name is Dave Bigger, and I represent Pittsfield Associates. We were the food service contractor who was brought in about, roughly two years ago to handle food service in both Lakeway Elementary and Pittsburgh Middle. And I just want to kind of give you an update in terms of where we are today. We've had quite a bit of challenges, as you can imagine. We took over actually about two or three days prior to the school year of 2015, which you know, if you remember the last time I was in front of you, it was a little more precarious. You know, we've gone through a lot of change over that period of time. The first year, we really struggled quite a bit. We were working with the SAU staff who wasn't really happy about the current situation that they were put into. You know, and I think we told them all, the staff did a really good job. We kind of pulled everybody together, finished the year fairly strong, and we came in right around to where we budgeted, so that was positive the first year. This year, just to kind of give you a little bit of an update, we've experienced some additional changes. We've had a bit of turnover in our staff. We've had three individuals who were previously SAU staff members who had moved on for many reasons, all of their own condition out of our designation. So we've kind of had a little bit of a staffing issue, specifically at Lakeway. We've been running short staff for some time. Up at the high school, about mid-year, we had an individual leave, and we have not replaced that individual as of yet. It's a little bit difficult to kind of find staff mid-year to replace and kind of step in, so we're going to work on kind of developing a talent pool going into next year. So if we do have some turnover, we're going to be able to address that issue. We do have a fairly solid team at Lakeway now. You know, we basically pulled some individuals together to do a strong finish to the year. I think numbers would kind of reflect that a little bit. We're hoping next year to really have our staff settled. We did bring in a new food service director at the start of this school year, so they are able to implement some tremendous change at the middle and high school level, specifically with the staff. I mean, the staff really has stepped up this year. The culture at that school has changed quite a bit in terms of the food service environment. They tended to be fairly negative in the past, and tell you this past year, if you walk in there, it's a completely different feeling, which is great, a great accomplishment. I'd like to congratulate our food service director, Annette Urington, and her team for kind of holding everything together this year. Kind of a challenging year again, but you know, we made some progress this year. In terms of the numbers, we're currently a little bit under budget, which is always a good thing to hear. We're trending to be slightly under budget for the end of the year. We budgeted fairly similarly coming into the next school year. We're confident that's a fairly easy budget to hit, based on some participation numbers, some increases in cash revenue. And we base that on the fact that this year at the high school, middle school alone, previous years, we were doing, actually the first year over here, we did about $52,000 in cash sales. This year, year-to-date, with about two and a half months left on the books, we're already at $75,000. So we bumped it up at least twenty, about 23 and change already year-to-date. So we're looking to finish very, very strong in terms of cash sales. The drawback to that is what we're looking for is reimbursable meals, because we get a little additional funding, federal and state money, based on reimbursable meal. The challenge is that the middle and high school levels, they have a lot of options. You know, kids at that age don't really eat, or they eat at home, or they eat very little, or they, frankly, you know, improperly. So that's kind of a reflection of the increased cash sales. We've got some ideas and thoughts in mind to be able to generate some more revenue from reimbursable meals next year, so we're hopeful. Questions?
Participation rates?
Participation rates have been fairly standard all year. Breakfast at Lakeway is about 17, 18 percent. Lunch is about 61 percent, which is a little bit of an increase over the past year and a slight increase over the years before as well. So we're confident that with some new programs, get our staffing situation settled down, we can kind of pull some additional revenue in there. And definitely, participation is key. We want to get those reimbursable meals. At the high school, breakfast is about 31 percent. Lunch is about 44. So that's reflective of the age bracket. Participation is down in terms of the reimbursable meals, but the cash sales, the al part sales have increased greatly, kind of coincide that in offset that quite a bit. We've done a good job of managing cost expenses. You know, payroll is pretty much right on or slightly below budget. So I think we're, you know, we're definitely in tune to make some more drastic changes next year and have some marked improvement going into next year.
Maybe when we get a new elementary school with a new cafeteria.
I was very excited to hear that. I hope I'm still in the mix when that happens, because that is a challenge.
That cafeteria is a challenge at Lakeway.
It is.
I'm serious. Maybe when we get a better environment, people enjoy going in.
I think so. It's definitely a challenge building all around. Kitchen is no exception.
Do you get any kind of regular feedback from students?
We get daily feedback, pretty much the staff, beyond unit staff. We do a winter survey, which at some point in time, I believe I shared the results with you. We don't really have a great reporting mechanism for that as of yet. Participation was very, very low this year. I think participation was only about 20 percent. Last year was about 40 and change. So I think this year, I don't know whether we just did a poor job letting people know that that survey was out there. But the responses were, as you can imagine, all over the place. You know, many very positive, liked the changes, and there was probably equal, if not slightly less, negative. You know, I think one of the marked improvements came with the staffing at the middle and high school. There was a notice change in terms of the responses reflective of the staff. Food offerings, again, you know, some love it, some hate it, which is pretty typical in schools. I represent about a dozen different schools. The responses are pretty much sustained. Any other questions? No? Okay.
Next on the agenda is updated.
Can we go up there?
Please.
I just want to preface this by saying that Mr. Lefebvre told me one thing, it was not to give up. And when I was struggling, he said, "Get in there and fight for it if you believe in it." So I will, I will do that. I'm sure it's clear to the board why it's been so diligent, why it's been so diligent in spearheading the effort to honor Pierre Lefebvre. Let me list again for the public and the board some highlights of Pierre's contributions to our school and our community. Pierre taught for 43 years and was named Teacher of the Year for both middle school and high school. Pierre was class advisor to my class, the class of 76 and 81, and a middle school advisor for 25 years. Pierre was a middle school and high school basketball coach with three state championships and twice named Coach of the Year. Pierre was advisor to the youth and government club for 25 years and was recently honored and conquered with an award that is given in his memory. Pierre was an athletic and co-curricular director for the middle school for 30 years, over 30 years. Pierre broadcast basketball and football on WLTN for 31 years. Pierre started the daycare program at Remick Park as rector director that is still in operation 25 years later. Pierre served as park commissioner and was our town ballot clerk for 40 years. Last week, Pierre, along with Emily Platt, was honored by the class of 2017 with their yearbook dedication. And on Tuesday of next week, before athletic awards, he'll be honored again with the NHIA double A service award. If the school board is planning to adopt a policy going forward with regard to dedications, Pierre Lefebvre was set a very high bar of criteria to be met. It was made clear from all the public input from my failed original proposal that no one denies Pierre is worthy of being honored. It was also clear that the main objection by the public to my proposal was in changing the name of someone who was already honored. It was suggested by many to honor Pierre for something that did not carry a person's name and has not been dedicated. It is my proposal to add a name to LHS. As the CTC is preceded by UJ Galen, LHS would be the Pierre Lefebvre Littleton High School. The impact is minimal, the honor is great. I hope the board will find in their heart of hearts that Pierre is deserving of this honor. There are few, if any, who have passed that could fill his shoes. Thank you.
Any questions? Other questions? Adidas Under Armour proposal.
Can I head set through the superintendent some updated information to you, including contract language? I'm not sure if you have had a chance to look at it, but I want to highlight a couple of things that have been changed. The word binding is now out of that contract, which is a pretty, pretty important word, pretty specific word. We guided you a list of schools, I think that probably the conversation was, you know, how many schools are doing it? You have a list of schools now in New Hampshire, as well as some testimonials from some ADEES in our division. I made it specific to Division Four, because it's going to make things more consistent on where we are. The footwear, which was a topic of concern, it was for me when I originally sat down with a vendor. It was the first question I had. I didn't like how it was actually worded. You see in the first large paragraph there that the only footwear that would ever be required to be Adidas footwear that the school would purchase on a purchase order, which we have never done, and I don't ever foresee us actually doing. This doesn't mean that our kids can't take advantage of 35 percent off Adidas footwear if they so choose. They still would have that opportunity, but we're not required to purchase Adidas footwear for our teams. You know, again, just a reminder that with this $15,000 comes 35 percent off on footwear, 40 percent off on apparel and accessories that are Adidas. The one thing that, you know, I've been told with this, we're going to get $15,000 over five years. If all we do is spend that $15,000 on Adidas, we're compliant. We don't have to spend anymore. There's really, in my opinion, nothing to lose here. The last slide, I know there's some questions about, you know, penalty. If you, if you look through the last contract and you look through this one, there's, there's nothing there that spells out there's a penalty. If three years from now, we're seeing that we're not upholding our end of the bargain, we lose whatever money that we may not have spent to that point in the two years following. We don't owe anything, we don't pay anything back, we don't get fined, we, there's nothing, we're out of nothing. This is, this is something that our kids, our teams, our coaches, our parents can take advantage of. And I look at 15,000 over five years, it's probably more like a 20, a 20-plus over five years. One of the slides that I prepared for you shows you how many times teams get new uniforms. That's in my 17 years here. It's not very often. This is going to speed that process up by a couple of years as well. So kids are going to stay in something new, something better, something more modern at a quicker pace. One other example, two other examples I want to share with you. Cobrown High School went through the same process a couple of years ago, a much larger school. In two years, they were able to change all the uniforms to Adidas. Adidas gave them a new five-year deal with more money upfront, because they had already taken care of all the uniforms. We're only, we're only obligated to buy Adidas uniforms when it's that team's turn in the system. So if I'm buying basketball uniforms for the next year, which we are, we would purchase Adidas uniforms. If for some reason, they could not provide us with what we want, we then can go to other outfits. As you can see from the testimony from Pittsfield, they went to a Jordan brand uniform. They didn't buy Adidas. And they're in their fourth year of a five-year deal right now. So it's, it's not something that is handcuffing the schools to the point where we're going to get ourselves in trouble. And then lastly, Newmarket High School, when, when we signed this deal, I think I shared with Mrs. Woodson in your, in the email to you, you had a question about that last slide, that they'll provide us with a link and a password to our, basically our school store. If people are able to order from that, I can share that with our, our students and our staff only. I can blast it townwide to everybody in town that wants to do this. Newmarket High School did a fundraiser based off this. They added three to four dollars to each sale that went to their student athlete leadership team, made thousands of dollars as a one-time fundraiser off of this link and everything that people in town purchase from Adidas. So well over $15,000 in revenue to their school based on an opportunity that was provided to them. You know, Adidas offers a very large amount of uniforms to the teams that we have right now. And one of the concerns that Mr. Cook brought up last time, Under Armour recently started making cheer uniforms. They're just talking a pipeline with Adidas doing the same thing down the road. Of course, that's their biggest competitor. And one of the things that we wouldn't be able to do, if we don't buy Adidas basketball uniforms, I can't buy Under Armour basketball, but I can go buy something else in the basketball brand. So there's some competition right there with those two vendors. So Adidas, most likely the next five years, may provide us with, or be able to provide us with cheer uniforms as well. The ski one, I wish Mr. Lefebvre was, he is that here, he could probably explain. Neither one of these vendors is dealing with ski. Ski's a whole, whole different animal. Nike's not dealing with ski, they're not going to provide us with ski suits and equipment. So both Under Armour and Adidas would be out for this. But we're able to provide our kids with what we have here, not only game uniforms for everything but one team right now, but every team and every kid would benefit from this somehow or could benefit from this stuff, whether they're buying stuff personally, online, or those teams were saving money in team gear that they buy. Typically, teams will buy a shirt, a sweat, a suit or something for that season. They're all going to be able to buy that stuff at a discount. So with that said, I'm hoping that I've answered any questions, I'm hoping that we got some of the concerns changed on the contract language. And you know, my hope is that come July first, July 1st, we can enter into an agreement and start putting some of this money to use for our programs.
Which, which one of these are we supposed to go off of?
This is the new one right here.
All right, this isn't the short form team.
That's correct.
Yeah. Why is there, what happened with the change in the distribution of funds?
So this is one of the other vendors that I use. This vendor is Collins Sports Center out of New Hampshire. They actually do way more Adidas product than Graphic Edge did, which is why I think they were able to make changes to this, that Graphic Edge was not able to do, and their allotment was just a little different. Same total of money, they just break it up a little bit differently.
Yeah, they want you to spend a lot more after, on the fifth year rather than upfront. So you're, you're, if you want that $4,000, you're going to stay through for the fifth year or so.
You know, at the, at the end of the, at the end of year two, if at the end of year two, we, we want out of this, we're out of it. We just don't get three, four, and five years' money. We're not out anything. We're really not. I haven't spoken to anybody who has had an issue with this. Everybody's speaking really highly of it. And hopefully that, you can, you can see this is a way for us to bring more money in and give our kids better opportunity, and I hope you can support it.
Greg, on the, have we had this contract reviewed by our attorney? Notice the Pittsfield coach ran it by their attorney for language just to review. Did we do that, or are we planning to do that before signing?
That's totally up to you.
I think it, to me, it personally makes sense to run any contract through a legal team. None of us are lawyers. I think it's wise that this just be run through the school lawyer. Pittsfield did that prior to it being signed.
Did anybody else?
Not, not in the notes that they sent back to Greg. He's the only one that, that specified in his letter back to Greg.
But the contract's the same for the other schools?
I'm assuming that he, Pittsfield said their contract that they signed wasn't binding, so Greg's saying this one's not binding either, so it sounds like it's a similar contract to Pittsfield.
This is, this is Pittsfield contract, deletion of Pittsfield entering Littleton change dates. He did this, he did this in front of me in Old Conaway at a conference.
Okay.
So this, this is their, this was their contract.
And this is the one that's been run by legal?
No, this is the one that they did.
Ran by Pittsfield Legal, a lot, aren't they?
Yeah. That's, oh yeah, no, I know.
Right.
Pittsfield Legal. This is, yeah, that's what I know.
Right, so I would just recommend that we run it by our legal.
We'd do that.
And then the only other question I have is, for the sports that don't, are unable to participate in this, which are, which, what I came up with was skiing, cheerleading, some feel lucky, although they, they supplement with, um, a little bit more cross type of thing.
That's, that would be Under Armour. Feel lucky, Adidas makes...
It's listed here on Adidas.
Adidas makes a feel lucky uniform.
Okay.
Under Armour provides a, that was a cross uniform, which is the same exact thing as Adidas.
So for the sports that don't, that aren't able to participate, so namely right now cheerleading and skiing, would you, I guess what I'm asking is if we're finding savings by setting this contract to help other sports, we're not looking necessarily reduce our athletic budget to bring this on, those funds could then be offset and used to the sports that don't benefit from this?
I think every, if we look at this as an athletic department whole, kid, all kids are going to benefit at some point in time from this. Teams are going to have the opportunity, hence my budget doesn't get cut by $15,000 because now we bring in 15, they're going to, their rotation goes through quicker. We have $15,000.
I don't want to see us sign this and then all of a sudden we vote to cut you by $15,000.
So somebody, individuals and teams are all going to benefit from this somehow.
Hey Greg, just put in one other thing. Ski team has Under Armour ski jackets.
They have jackets.
It's like the only thing that the school provided, so they could still do that.
I think, I think legal take a look at it.
Barring anything from our lawyer. I don't think any problem. I might look at it.
Okay, so we'll, it's run it by legal and then there's that for the next week for confirmation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
So.
Thanks, Ron.
You're her.
I know, you're over there. Quiet.
The next thing on the agenda is the school board's summer schedule. I'm proposing that we only have one meeting in July, which is July 17. Everybody gets mentioned when they're taking vacations or if they're taking vacations. So I would propose that we meet July 17 unless we need something urgent to do before then.
Okay. Go with that. I don't get a vacation, so.
Well, neither does the board. You're okay, Greg?
Yeah, my wife's away, but I did just figure out something for the boys, that's all.
Yeah. Can you arrange?
Yeah, you can.
We'll have manifest at the end of June, mid and early July, so.
So Tom will usually send out a memo to the board to say, we have manifest to sign, so when you get a chance to come in and sign it.
Yeah.
That's a team, right?
So right now, we've had a scheduled meeting set for July 3rd. That's going to be eliminated.
Correct. That's a bad time to have a meeting in the, people usually like to take, meetings take you to shoot on.
The other thing is that I believe I asked the board to get to me the evaluation on the superintendent. I don't know if anybody has done that.
I didn't get it to you, but I have done it.
All right, I appreciate it. Somebody, somehow they could get it to me and we can either have a meeting about it or I'll just write up the comments and try to score it and send it all back to you somehow. Okay?
Yeah.
And then we might, we might have a needless meeting.
We may have to. I hate to have too many meetings, but I do think that the possibility to meet sometime next week, maybe a week from tonight, something because we're trying to hire teachers left and right. And we need to, once we get those confirmed, the quicker I can get them to you, the quicker they can, we can confirm with them.
So that means.
Try to be respectful of your time, but we may need to do that next week.
I think that is running that June 12, there's a potential for a quick meeting, hopefully a quick meeting at 5:30. Then we're going July 17. Okay? Oh yeah, 2:00, I forgot about that. All right. But we'll have to, in other words, if you have to get a meeting together just for nominations and stuff, we can do that quickly. And we'll have to place a meeting, so.
Yeah.
On the new business, we have a 2017-2020 technology plan, Mr. Pryor. I know that that's not state mandated anymore, but you viewed your tech plan. I think it's a good idea because it also helps us think about the budget for the following years.
So all I'd like to say to it is what the tech committee, this is a joint effort. This isn't me creating this. We created this as a committee. We all felt it was important that if we don't know where we're going, how are we going to get there? So we wanted to kind of piggyback off what had already been done, but a lot of the plan that was approved by the board back in 2014 had already been either axed, like we didn't do it, or we were far past all the requirements that the tech plan had done. So this allows us as a tech committee, as well as myself as a tech director, to budget accordingly for the changes that we see fit. As you can see throughout the plan, everything is as detailed as we could come up with. It's something we've really worked on for about six months as a tech committee, so it wasn't thrown together in the two meetings. We took turns, you know, going through it. As Ann suggested, the Department of Ed no longer requires a tech plan and the E-Rate funding no longer has it as a prerequisite, which used to have it. If you wanted to get E-Rate funding back for any technology purchases, you had to provide your tech plan with any RFP and so forth. So it's really for our benefit only. Unless there's some unforeseen circumstances, I think everything that we have discussed as a tech committee would be taken care of in the three-year plan for upgrades. That would replace everything that's currently in our tech inventory, with the exception of a server here or there. But, you know, we can make changes, you know, as we see fit. And as you see, I think it's, one of the last few pages, the increase this year from, or this coming school year was 0%. Next year's would drop about 1% and then the year after that it would go up like 0.6%. So it's pretty flat funding for the next three school years and that would require, that would allow us to replace all of our antiquated equipment and stay with the one-to-one program so that as seventh graders come in, they would receive a new Chromebook at that time. So we wanted to present it, but we wanted to make, present it at the right time and sort of just get your blessing that that's where we want to go.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, not so much question. Well, one's a question.
Sure.
Under technology goals and accessibility, you talked about evaluate and renew technology integrator positions for 2017 through 2020, et cetera. Do you have an evaluation plan set for that as to how you're going to evaluate the people in those positions?
So there's currently only one tech integrator and that's Amy Cobb.
Right, but I notice you're going to be looking at presenting one for this next.
Well, I think similar to what Crystal is trying to do at Lakeway with integrating a technology class into the fifth and sixth grade, we have to become more creative at the high school, middle school. And right now, and I think it's safe to say that Amy hasn't been a true tech integrator this year, that she's been pulled in too many different directions. So I wouldn't even know where to begin, Greg, as to how to evaluate her because I don't think she's done her position. I think she's done what's been asked of her and more, but to be a specific tech integrator, I think she's had to focus on the media specialist.
Well, that raises another question. How do you prevent that from happening year after year where she's pulled in so many different directions?
I think one piece, if you don't mind me telling you, is we talked to Steve about Lisa pulling Amy away from the library, because right now she still does all the lesson plans for K through six library stuff. And I think long-term, for her to be a true tech integrator, we would have to take that off her plate. So I think the challenge that Dale and I have is how do we get to that point? And then we could learn, we could figure out how to evaluate her position because we actually have an articulated position. Right now, we're kind of bending her right in the middle. So I think budgetarily, if we get coverage for that library piece, we could then really hone in on what we need her to do as a tech integrator. So it's a little hurdles along the way. She has done a tremendous job and I think we see the need for the tech integrator piece to really be her soul.
I think part of the evaluation going forward is you need to make us aware if that's happening and that you're having a difficult time controlling that from happening. Because that is then going to get us a bigger picture as to whether or not we need to really look at other resources for library or for, that are going to prevent that from going forward. But, so I think it should be part of the evaluation, but not necessarily a negative thing towards the tech integrator. It's a negative thing towards not having the resources to make this position do what it's supposed to do. So I did have, you mind if I have more? I have more. So on the policy attachments.
Yep.
Under the first one, the GBEF internet access for staff, I realize you kind of took the same policy as you pretty much had for the students, except in the second paragraph under statement of policy, it reads, "Staff shall be responsible for the appropriate use of technology and shall use the district's technological resources only for purposes related to their education." So it's, that's referencing the student's education. It needs to be reworded as to related to their educating, not their getting educated. Does that make sense?
It does. That policy was brought before the board at the beginning of the school year.
So now we missed it?
That was adopted as is and so on. That's just.
So it's just a wording, but it sure, it comes across as though they're being educated, not doing the educated. Under acceptable use for students, if you look at the acceptable use for employees, it basically states computer technology acceptable use guidelines for employees, I think we need to add that to the student one to say for students. Because right now, it just says computer technology acceptable use guidelines. So if we're going to distinguish students from employees, just in the title, I think it needs to be, for students needs to be added to that one. Does that make sense? And then on EH, which I got to get to because I don't remember what my question was. So EH, so on EH, which is data management, it specifies that the superintendent finds, and again, this is a policy that we evidently already adopted, but after looking at it, again, I had a question. Says if the superintendent finds the information not to be in public, not to be public in nature, he or she shall so inform the requesting party and shall for no reason release such information. And this is a question more for the board, for, is there a time limit on non-public information that is not sealed? You know, we seal, sometimes we seal minutes, other times we don't.
Non-public minutes have to be available within 72 hours.
Non-public minutes?
Right.
Have to be available. So the question I have is how does that, if there was stuff that was in not, that was not in, and it says not to be public in nature, is that essentially the stuff that's discussed in non-public or is that data that's not public? I guess is what I'm questioning on that.
Which paragraph are you looking at?
Number three. Is that just relating to like information about a student that's personal, that we kind of educationally protected, similar to health information is protected, there's educational information? Okay. That's all, that's the only question I have on that. So I just wanted to clarify that. Okay. That was it. Thanks.
No direct reinformation, basically.
I think there's two or three things that Greg brought up. If you can get them to Patty to strike out an ad or however, we might be able to discuss it next week.
Okay.
Get them cleaned up. Okay? So anything else?
No, but I'm on the next item. So I can just keep knowing if you want.
That committee, by the way, met a lot. What I recognize is that people are on that committee, Dale's leadership, but also other individuals, they do meet. They meet often.
Yeah.
They'll all.
So a lot of work.
Yeah, they do some good work. Very good work.
Great collaboration between all the schools, but a lot of good ideas too. And the people that are on it want to be on it. So even though the numbers have been like around 10 or 12 staff, that's, they want to be there, so they want to give input.
Well, that's good.
It's been great, so. They deserve a lot of the credit.
Yeah.
So the next item, Dr. Niles and I talked a few months ago, kind of, and you saw it, I think it was in the first board or director's report in February, and then I followed up in April, which is kind of like some updated figures as to where we were at, as to how we needed to better our infrastructure immediately. So the tech plan covers everything for the most part, with the exception of our wireless access points. And now that we're one-to-one, the need for consistent internet is more evident than probably it ever has been. I mean, the kids used to maybe go to the library to use the desktop that was hardwired, but now that, you know, the staff has become more prone to using the devices in their curriculum, the need for a reliable wireless access is critical. The stuff, the items that we currently use are six years old. Average life expectancy is five to seven years, so we are directly in that, in that gap. The proposal that Matt and I worked on with our vendors was to switch products from an HP access point, which requires an access controller, which is, would also have to be upgraded, which is about $3,000. And the access points are actually more expensive than what you have for a proposal in front of you. So it'd be more expensive to stick with the same equipment that we use to go to more of a cloud-based access point that's easier managed and it eliminates the wireless controller. So we provided you with four quotes from four different vendors to replace the remaining 60 access points in our district. And the one I would like the board to discuss would be the one from IT Savvy, which is not just because it's the best price, had a really good relationship with them. They're a new vendor for us this year, but they're actually, the gentleman that we work with was a former employee of Netrix, who's also a vendor that we got a quote from. He actually flew out here from Chicago in the beginning of May and visited with Matt and I, took us to lunch. So he's been instrumental in getting us the best price and also that covers a three-year membership, you know, that is required of the Arrow Hive. So then at that point, the next tech plan or so forth, we could, we could budget in that membership cost that's affiliated with that into the budget or look at, you know, different alternatives at that, at that point. But this, this would be a purchase that would get us through really the next, hopefully the next five to seven years, if not longer, but definitely through the technology plan that we just talked about.
And Dale, the four, the four proposals, are they all offering, they're all comparing the same thing to each other as far as?
They are. The only one that separated it was the Whaley, where they, they charge you for the Arrow Hive and then they charge you per Arrow Hive, the three-year membership, which significantly increased their price.
But they're all, if you'd like, if everything is offered, it's all equal across.
We asked for the same thing from all the vendors, what we would need. We actually only asked for one year, but they, most, the Arrow Hive company generally does three-year with any new purchases. And then from there, if it's an older equipment, which it would be, then you would renew it on a year-to-year basis. So I guess what I'm asking from the board is, and I don't know if we have to set a, or where the monies would come from, but either an unextended balance at the end-of-the-year fund or from a capital reserve account for equipment.
Wouldn't we initially discuss this? What were we estimating the dollar amount to be?
I think in the tech report that I gave.
Previous conversations, previous meetings.
Almost identical. It was 26,000.
Okay, so we're not like way off or?
No.
And Tom, were we finding that money?
We split about $20,000 left in the technology budget.
Okay.
And there's 102,000, 103,000 in the equipment capital reserve.
We were discussing today about when we needed to make those decisions and if we take from that equipment.
Well, if you take it from a capital reserve fund, you just have to take action. the actual you have to do.
Right.
If you're thinking we're going to still be looking at this year's unallocated funds, we just have, we have to have an enforceable commitment. So you can still, we can still balance things a little bit at this point.
All right. So we could maybe confirm this on June 19th?
We were looking for installation during July, I would imagine.
We would be doing it ourselves. So anytime over the summer, we would do it. And it's about a two-week delivery process, so.
Do 19 would be fine.
That would be fine.
Yeah.
Because the only thing I would say regarding the unextended funds in the technology budget, there is roughly, it's 21,000 and change, I believe. But 7,600 is going to be for a new firewall, which is mandated by the Internet Protection Act. So that does need to be, that does need to come out, which would most likely be on your manifest for the 19th. I have multiple quotes for that too. I just elected that only be on here twice tonight instead of.
Okay. Where is that?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dale.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda, personnel, do you have any reports?
We, we have met, but we haven't done anything before.
We'll be, we'll need to meet again.
We've met a couple of times.
All right. For servants?
We had a meeting on Friday, and we did some updates on previous meeting, and there are a few things that carried over as far as the board is concerned that we need to discuss and decide upon. We didn't make a final decision on the security cameras, and we also have to make a decision on how many unit ventilators we're going to order for Lakeway. I think the original request was for four, Greg?
Was for four, was originally yes.
And that's about $45,000.
Plus four?
Plus four. And there's two, if I'm correct, and now correct me, two that need, need replacement immediately. Replacement immediately, like prior to next winter.
Oh, yeah.
Before the cold sets in. The two need to be replaced. There's a third that's, has a fix on it that has been working, but Terry doesn't have a whole lot of confidence in it, if I'm correct on that. And then the fourth was going to be shelved for future use because the build time on these is 12 weeks. So if we were to lose one in the middle of the winter without one shelf, we could be in trouble with that.
Seems like every time we shelve, we'll reuse it the next week.
Pretty much. It's pretty much what's happening.
It's still a shelf.
For example, the one that needs to be replaced, it was installed in 1988.
Wow.
Wow, that's pretty good.
And the other complication to this is that we need to ensure which ones we're going to use, because there's left-handed ones and right-handed ones. You can't put a left-handed and a right-handed and vice versa. So as we, as we order them, we have to, you know, with the exception of maybe the shelved one, if we have a majority of right-handed units, then we could probably be comfortable we're putting, shelving a right-handed unit. But we do have a left-handed unit, I think, that has to be replaced, and we need to make sure that we order specific to that unit. Correct.
I was going to split it up, two and two.
With the exception of the kindergarten area, these were installed in 79 and 88.
Goodness.
We've cut some light.
Yeah.
Pretty good.
They use some of those.
The alternative, you have to go ahead. Yes, and the alternative to this is replacing our entire.
Your reading.
Which is going to be far more than, particularly in a building that we're already talking about trying to replace because it's been around for so long. So, so we, we kind of talked about that too, as to should we just replace the whole heating system, and that would be a humongous cost.
Oh, yeah.
For a building that we are attempting to move away from. So.
That's right.
These are temporary fixes, but there's no other, there's no other good idea at this point. Unless we can move Littleton a little further south to the. To the lower climate, but I don't see that happening.
And how much, the cameras were about 14?
14,000.
271,000.
Now, that was a quote you sent to us.
14,271,000.
And then the third item that we need to just put on the table is, we've talked about storage issues, Washington Street facilities, whether or not we should renovate that, which needs about $13,000, total renovations, or look at storage trailers. And after discussing with the custodial staff, they feel the storage trailer would be very impractical, mainly because I believe enough space for an aisle. And we talked about big items, can't really store much in there. So the recommendation was to spend 13,000 to renovate, fix the Washington Street storage facility. Maybe we're from that, some electrical work, I think?
Just a new roof.
Just a new roof. And some cosmetics. About 13,000.
I think that was built by one of the construction classes years ago.
It was? But we had to move that.
We talked about moving.
Yeah.
I don't think we were, I don't think we're being forced to. I think it was just an option.
We talked about moving it up to.
I thought they'd be wanting us to.
Yeah, to the parking lot.
So that's the immediate stores, you were, other than looking at some of the Daisy Bronson issues, but right now we need to decide.
I did get thinking, we talked about it, about the Daisy Bronson issue and a lot of the stuff on the third floor is the drama sets and the drama clothing, and there's some concern. I think the fire chief is not really happy with what's up there and how that's, so I kept thinking over the weekend, I happened to be at the Opera Building for a different function, and have we ever looked at combining? I know there's a, there's a whole drama team, and I don't remember, I think something players, I think, that works out of the Opera Building. Have we ever proposed moving our drama to the Opera Building and using that facility, and then maybe combining? I mean, we've got so many sets and they have so many sets. We have so many costumes, they have so many costumes, too.
We've officially been evicted from the.
Yeah.
Some concern. All right. So I was just thinking, here we have, we've got two drama teams that have all these sets and all this clothing, and could we condense, get rid of some stuff? And say, and then open up some space.
There are obligations to do that.
There were fire.
Big building for the whole drama.
There were fire concerns with that, too. That's exactly what happened.
All right. I was just thinking, is there an opportunity to open up some space in the Academy Building? But it sounds like that's not.
That happened a couple of years ago.
I think both theater groups are looking for storage.
Yeah.
Like to throw it in the way.
Yeah, right.
Comes back.
The other thing that was.
You can't really build it down and rent it. How about, could we, in back of, in back of Daisy Bronson, there's a little spot of land. Is there any thought of maybe moving that Union Street building up to there?
I think we talked at one point of putting it at the end of the lot, didn't we?
Well, we did, but there's that, I don't know if that's going to be used. Let's put it there.
Right, right.
So.
There was some discussion about building a new storage area there, which was pretty expensive. So that was passed on. George Roder had it.
Yep.
Yeah, because I mean, I don't know with that current building down by Union Street, whether that can be, you know, transported.
We did discuss at the group that there's, that even, the old custodian or head custodians have said that there's still stuff to go through that we can kind of reduce and not, that's just not being used. There's some, some equipment that's down there that we can, so there's still some potential to recycle some stuff and get it out of our possession and off to either recycling or off to somebody else who might be able to use it. The other thing that we thought that they did bring up was the photocopyers that are down in the classroom at the bottom of the Academy Building are finally going to be en route to their home.
Oh, good.
So I think, I don't know if, if some of them have already gone, or if they're, it's coming up, or, but it's coming soon, right?
I think it's in your manifest.
Oh, there we go.
Would be able to take them.
So that'll, that'll free up that classroom.
It is in there. I'd love to talk just to make sure.
But I think the summer rec program will be utilizing some of that space, but. Anyway, so we had some discussion, a lot of discussion on storage, so.
I know, again. How long have I been on the board?
Alex, you brought up, was it the third floor, that some of those classrooms have walls that are non-weight bearing that were put up to shrink the size of the classroom? Or was that in the basement?
Basement.
The basement.
Basement. So if, currently it's, has been used and will be used this summer once again by Littleton Park and Rec. But if you chose not to do that, or that wasn't necessary in the future, a lot of those walls can be removed, the non-weight bearing walls, and you may create a lot of space on the bottom floor that had, easy to get to through the gym. Because those were built for classroom space.
Yeah.
Back when we needed them, specifically special high classrooms.
Yep, that's right.
In those schools there.
That's right.
So those were originally not there.
That's right, yeah.
So the question is, do we invest 13,000 in Washington Street, or invest 13,000 in renovating those classrooms, the storage space?
Another issue.
I think given the fact that we still have all this, all this stuff in stores that we haven't gone through, it's a tough, it's a tough, it's a tough question to answer at this time.
Is the roof leaking badly?
Oh, but if you, if you look at it, it's, it needs to be repaired soon or it's going to deteriorate.
It's going to use it. No matter what we do, we're going to use it.
You know, there's, there's some buildings that are empty in our community.
That's what I said.
Mainly the Hitzner Building. But there's a few others, I think. Are there any, any opportunities to rent, or these space for storage as opposed to replacing? I mean, is that, I don't know, I'm just thinking about that now. You know, is there an option to, I mean, Hitzner is this huge facility. Is there dry storage within that building that they might be able to, they might be willing to lease space, the owners of, whoever owns that building, you know, it's sitting there empty. I think there is somebody that's leasing space, and one of them might see a car and a sign on the window, but, you know, that might be an option.
We should check it out.
I said the same thing. Oh, you're not that big. That's, that's a good idea. I was just thinking, a building that's not, you know.
It's just got to be dry storage, otherwise there is a risk of ruining stuff.
Yeah, right. That is our plan.
So do you think that custodians this summer could assess our real storage needs?
We could do that.
And that may really know what we're going to be storing, because if half the stuff is going, then that really would determine a lot of these storage needs.
Some of it is, it's rather large equipment that we haven't used in the last few years. Like track and field equipment, like high jump mats.
Oh, yeah.
At the middle school, we used to have a team. They no longer, they don't have, they haven't had a team the last couple of years. Lakeway still does, but they don't really involve themselves in high jump. So, so we had the, you know, those are huge mats that take up a lot of space, that if we decided we were no longer going to do the high jump, then we'd maybe try and sell them, because they're in good, in good shape.
Well, maybe we need a, get a general yard sale. The old cafeteria tables, some kind of.
Not sure. Possibly. I'm not sure.
From Lakeway?
From Lakeway?
Yeah, there's a long one.
They're in there, they take up a lot of space.
Yeah. Taking up a lot of space in there.
I don't know what the market is for those, but.
eBay.
eBay.
Combination. All right. Something to work on within the next week, so.
But again, the two pressing items are unit ventilators and the cameras.
And the cameras.
I don't know what the board's pleasure is in terms of action, but directly as to who wants it.
Were any of those ventilators in the budget for next year?
They were originally, but they were taken.
Taken out, so we need all four.
Yeah, there's no money in the current budget.
I would, I would recommend we move tonight to operate the two of, to get those ordered, get them in process now, that we know need to be replaced, and we can talk about what to go for, to go from there, whether they're marketed.
I think that's a fair recommendation. Yeah.
Okay, then we can figure out between now and.
Yeah, what, the other, we need to get the two in, in the pipeline.
And then security cameras, we probably need to move on that tonight, too.
It'd be good. Yeah, I think looking at the two, I don't, I'm talking with Dale, like I'm hearing both are the two, the biggest priorities at this point.
I'm not sure why they're left out. They're, they're in the budget for Lakeway, and we want to, you know, complete overhaul of what we had, and that seems to be working really well. So we did expand these new cameras to our infrastructure. It's all, it's all, it's accessible, all cameras are accessible very easily. Police Department, for example, are very much, they're moving ahead with this. And that, it also includes, didn't mention, the academy is, is within that number.
So we need a motion or just a consensus?
I think we need a motion.
I think we make a motion that we, we order two unit ventilators for Lakeway and the 14, 14 security cameras to fill in the voids in our present security system.
Second.
Any further discussion? You want to put a price on that, or you're just going to leave it?
Well, the unit ventilators was worth five, but I don't know how much the two of them would be, not to exceed.
The unit ventilators, a quote for two, unit ventilators, 19,440.
For two?
For two, with the installation cost being 3,300.
So the total, that's 22,000, 22,000?
22,700, probably.
So not to exceed 23,000.
Okay. For the unit ventilators, and 14,271 for the.
I think you might get to change that to 24,000, because I don't think it's at 23,700. So I don't see 24,000.
So can we do a second?
Yes.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the facility? So are you going to, are you guys going to look at?
The storage issue.
The storage issue.
We have need to assess.
See what we can think about. All right. So our policies, we've been pretty busy right here.
Yes, you have.
So, policy GBCD is the background investigation, criminal records check and fingerprinting. This is a revised first read. Deb and Patty had also gone to a workshop on this, and we did talk with them about changes. And the ones that you see on the statement of policy, one, two, third paragraph, we said have passed a CHRI, so CHRI should be spelled out.
It is.
It is, so we can take this, that part out. And then there was just, I think there was a typo, the district will not, I think it said employee, so you really mean to say employed. And then the criminal backgrounds checks slash fingerprinting needs to be added to that area. Before it said that by authorized employee of the district, they, we cannot do that. It's going to be done by a law enforcement officer. So that needs to be deleted, and we'll just say a qualified enforcement officer. And then, if, after two attempts, because sometimes people don't have fingerprints because they've been smoothed off. We have to get from the police clearance from every city, town, or county where that applicant has lived during the past five years. And then underneath the legal references, we did add the appendix that came, that came with those. The first one was initiated in 2000, revised in 2010, and then we had updates in 2016. we had updates in two thousand and sixteen. So, do you wanna go through all of these and make a motion, maybe one at a time?
I don't know.
Okay, so the next one is G V C D R, which is the procedure, um, the gals wrote this up for us, um, they did put the prices on there of what it would cost, but they may change from time to time, so we just wanna take that out, it's determined by the state of the hand, the Department of Safety, and it'll be borne by the individual. And then if they can't get it done there, and you have to go to a local area to do it, they may also charge you to do it. So that's on that one, and that was the first read.
And on, on the fingerprinting, um, what's the timeframe on the background check and fingerprinting to come back before, because if we make an offer to hire, how long until that stuff is back before they can actually, typically before they can.
At least a couple of weeks.
Okay, so one of the things that came up in facilities last week that we talked about was, um, you know, they have summer staff that they wanna bring in, but they've got to, they've got to get them finger, some of the members have to be fingerprinting, because they haven't worked for us before. And the question was, if we wait until, for the two weeks, we could lose two weeks of valuable custodial work in the summertime, and summer's so short. So we had talked, we talked to them at the facilities meeting about making an exception and moving forward with those now, and that for, and for the district to take on the cost, because it would cost, I think, a total of, I don't know how much money, but for it, for the district to take on that cost, they don't lose two weeks' worth of work. So I don't know how, if that was, I don't know where we stood with that, if we were able to do that, or if it's, but to me, it's, it's a huge, in certain circumstances, it's a big loss of waiting that two weeks for, where, right now, the offer, the offer hasn't been given to these people. It was, do we fingerprint everybody that's applied, because it was a small pool, and then, once the results are back, we can make the offer, we can make the offer, and it comes before the board to approve, but now we no longer have that two-week window after, that two-week window to wait for a background check.
It was my understanding at the train, which was done by the state, state police.
Yeah.
The districts cannot pay for their criminal background checks, they have to, the individual goes.
They do.
There's a new process, um, that we have, the, the law's changed in May, June, um, there's a new process that Debbie and I are gonna have to do for background checks now. It's all gonna be processed through here, they're gonna pay us, we are going to send them with their form to Trugeth when they get their live scan done, they're gonna come back here, we're gonna put the packet together and send it to Department of Safety.
Is it something that we can still do ahead of making the offer, though? No, see, but then who wants to pay forty-seven dollars if I'm not gonna be.
I am.
That's the other question, yeah. It was just a discussion about, you know, we've got two weeks of valuable summertime that we're gonna lose because of this, of this wait time.
Why do we wait to, to hire them?
You've got a couple of nominations tonight.
Okay.
So if they're approved, then they can start the process.
Right, I just know that was a discussion we talked about, of the frustration that, you know, they start the summer off and lose two weeks of just valuable time, that if somebody was approved, they wouldn't be ready to work.
Well, we also discussed what was the liability to the district itself.
Okay.
All right, the next policy is the exit interview policy for staff, which is the first read. You can see that we, um, put a couple of comments in, and then struck out a few others. Yeah. And the only thing that we haven't developed or yet, um, is survey itself. Okay. And then the next policy was the I J O C, um, actually, it's, this one wasn't, there was no comments from the gals about this, because of the background check and everything, so this is a reviewed first read in and of itself, so there was no changes on that at all, uh, because it also refers you to the I J O C, our volunteer procedures, which is how the district will implement volunteers and what they have to know. The, one thing on the procedure is, um, a designated volunteer is any volunteer who comes in direct contact with pupils, meets regularly with students, meets with students on a one-to-one basis, drives or accompanies students as a chaperone on a field trip, um, then we have an insurance policy for that. And then the volunteers need to familiarize, familiarize themselves with the following policies, which are all listed, and then the principals and/or volunteer coordinators shall assess the performance of the volunteers. This is not happening now, because a lot of our people just come in and say, here I am, um, but we've decided that we're gonna have a letter sent out to, with that word, all of the volunteers for next year.
Parents and volunteers.
Parents and volunteers, going out before September, so that they are well aware of this policy.
Is a volunteer different than a chaperone?
Well, the chaperone is a designated volunteer, that's, you have to define who's designated, and that's who, the, the five things are people that are designated.
Okay.
So it's, that's a great question.
I mean, the teacher, for example, if you're going on a field trip, or if they're going on to, um, a senior trip, whatever it is, the kids can't go home and just ask their mom and pop, oh, can you chaperone? Because they're gonna have to go through the criminal background check.
Oh.
Yeah.
So the chaperones that we do now, they don't go through that, they just go through a meeting with the assistant principal, or whatever it is at each institution, okay?
Yeah.
Because that was one of my questions I'd written down, was, I thought the current, for chaperones now, they're not allowed to do a one-on-one, like, they, they have to be, they're chaperoning with a group, or they're chaperoning with others, with another staff members, they're never a one-on-one. So this volunteer program would be, would be criminal backgrounds that would then allow for a one-on-one if need be.
Right, and they're gonna have to all get their fingerprinting done and.
So that means the, the days of a chaperone, but just a parent volunteer going on a field trip, that would go away?
Is that state mandated?
Yes.
The new laws have denied it.
So my mother that's going on the field trip Thursday would have to have her fingerprint tomorrow and pay forty-nine dollars, plus the field trip?
It's not, it's not forty-nine dollars, for volunteers, twenty dollars. And if you do it, once you have it done, if you pay him, the next year, it's a one-time fee, if you're consecutive in, in the amount of time you're through it.
Wow. But that, this doesn't go into effect until, are we finishing up this academic year now?
We don't currently have a policy, but once this goes into effect, it will be into effect.
So we wouldn't likely adopt this till after the academic year is finished, so that we're through.
Well, we can say it's effective.
July one.
Or whatever it is, or July one, yes.
Exactly.
And let's see, what else?
So, so you're gonna have to let those parents know well in advance, because it takes three to four weeks to get.
That's why the letter would level with some.
Not effective yet, hey?
I'm sorry?
Not in effect yet.
For the end of, until the end of the school year, we're just gonna let it go, because it's been.
Right, but you've got two months now until September, so.
All the parents and all the volunteers are gonna need to know that need to get their fingerprints checked, and it's twenty dollars and change at the point, at this point in time.
Right, and you have to do it every year? Because I do it with E I. Oh.
We might do it one time for, say.
Oh, yeah, so I'm not, I mean, I already did it one trip to E I, I just didn't want, I didn't want to be in it. I wanted to execute. Right.
And then, uh, the other one, J L C F, is the district wellness policy, which is the first read, we did take a couple of things out of that, uh, it's about, I don't know, five, six pages long.
Yeah, I did that one question under.
What?
Under letter D for meal time and scheduling.
Uh, let's see, well.
It's on the second page. Um, it says, shall ensure students have sufficient time to eat breakfast and lunch. Is there a definition of sufficient time?
I'm not sure there is, but the, the schools themselves spell out what the lunchtime is and how much time they've got.
Okay, because I think you'd have a, um, you'd have a different opinions of what sufficient, what sufficient time is.
Well, different, but that you do, right?
Well, yeah, but I think that there's, you know, you've got some kids that just are slower eaters in general, and they're lucky if they get halfway through their lunch, and they're told to back everything up.
Yeah.
And you've got other kids that are finished in four minutes and sit there chatting for the remainder of the time, so I just didn't know if there was a definition of sufficient time.
I don't think we looked that up, but.
Well, it talks about it in accordance with, with the Federal Child Nutrition and Wickrey Authorization Act, but so, is it defined in that, do we know?
Probably is, uh-huh, but we'll see.
You'd just be interested.
Yeah, whoops, where are we? And then the J L C R two is the Littleton High School and Daisy Bronson Middle School Wellness Policy, which they revised for a first read.
Yeah, see, there it does specify the time.
Yeah, and Lakeway has done that as well.
Okay.
So, I would recommend that the board adopt the first reading or make a motion to approve the first read of a lot of the policies revised and reviewed.
As presented, I mean, I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading of the policies presented.
Okay, and Kim, do you want a second?
I got a second.
Any further questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Okay, uh, a couple of weeks ago, Jim and Leslie and I visited Moscoma, uh, for the purpose of looking at, uh, the, the school construction they did there, looking at the project they did, most importantly, uh, hearing how they, how they went about it. There was a, one of those cases where, uh, after several attempts to pass the bond issue to, to build the new, the new, uh, secondary building, that it, it did pass, and, uh, I really, really thank Jim for his time, Leslie Robbins for her time, and, and Patrick Andrew, superintendent, uh, for the time that he's, he spent several hours with us touring the building, talking about the things that we need to think about in terms of, uh, putting together a committee, putting together the right, getting the right mix of people together, certainly with, you know, Brian's, uh, work, which is noted and appreciated, by the way, and those others who, who worked as well, or who are working in the town to look at this issue, uh, you know, with, uh, people's effort and with some time and some planning and, and everything, we, uh, we certainly, uh, need to move forward and get a proposal out to the voters, uh, you know, in the next upcoming, uh, or this soon at least, if not in the upcoming year, certainly the following year. I think that's one thing that he said, basically in terms of a timeline, you know, you're looking at least an eighteen-month process, you know, so we're probably would be looking at something, obviously not this coming budget year, but, uh, but the following. Being the community involved, I think there's some opportunities, obviously, to partner with the town, perhaps some of the things that are being talked about with, with the rec facilities, uh, other facilities, and as I said, I think there's some other potential partners that, uh, maybe we can look at, at this project a little bit differently. But it really is, it really should be an effort by not just the school, but the, but the town and other entities here as well. So, uh, great visit, they did a wonderful job there, and their, their school, not much bigger than we are, they're, they're about a thousand students. I did wanna comment, I'm not sure where, where in the agenda this should've gone, or could go, so I'll just mention my report. Uh, Rachel Angelis asked us, asked me a couple of weeks ago, why, why her name was alone in the minutes, is with, is being recommended for rehire. Unfortunately, that was inadvertently, she was left inadvertently off of the original list, so, so Rachel and friends of Rachel and fans of Rachel out there listening, that was simply an oversight, but we did want to formalize, uh, that and ask why that was, that was done that way, and, uh, my apologies. The other day, uh, we had our North Country Superintendent's meeting up in, uh, where was that, Tom? Colberg? Tom wasn't there, we waved to him about, I think it was about Lancaster, uh, but, uh, but there, there's several things there, the, the commercial education was there, and, uh, and again, mostly, mostly listening, I think, to the report that was given, so I'm gonna share with you a document, and already has hers, I'll pass these out. This was, this is, this is a document, and I'm not gonna go over it, you could look at it in your own time, but it's, there's a lot of, a lot of data in there, shows population trends, this is Coas County, uh, the reason Grafton County's not in there, because this, this particular project was funded by a, a grant that was specific to Coas County, but, but it, but it certainly, we have lots in common, uh, at least with some sectors there. I think if you look at, you'll see some data collected over the nation as a whole, which areas are losing population, which areas are gaining population. I think one of the more interesting pieces of data in there, there was, it was a state debt projection to state population changes, and New Hampshire is a state, if I, you know, over the next few years, it's expected to lose population, Grafton County being the county that gets, I guess, the distinction of losing the least, Grafton County basically is a projected area remains somewhat even, uh, but some, some significant changes shifted in population, um, and obviously that has huge implications. I think notable there, too, is, is some of the, David, you'll see there, the effect of the stabilization grant reduction, and those, those school districts, of course, the stabilization grant by its very nature was to help shield schools, uh, uh, that have, that have high populations of low-income students, so it's no surprise that if you start looking at those schools that have suffered the most from the reduction phasos of the, of the stabilization grant, that certainly those schools with high populations of, uh, low-income students are affected the most, so some of that data's in there for you to look at as well. So that was, uh, as you can tell by the side of the document, that took most of our morning, uh, up there with, with the meeting, and, uh, but it was certainly something that was, you know, very, very useful. I do, I did attend a law conference in Concord, uh, a little over a week ago, and, uh, again, some, some updates, some things, I think with the policy work we're doing already, uh, we've made a lot of progress, we're on top of many things, but there's a, there's a few wrinkles, new wrinkles, things we need to pay attention to, uh, that we'll, we'll be, probably work with the policy committee and with the board as a whole, to address in the upcoming weeks and months, the female app conference. I was asked by Andrew to conduct, uh, Jared Chaconi at, I probably totally messed up that name, Chacone at the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, I'm still in my Spanish mode sometimes when I pronounce certain words here, sorry. Uh, but, but the, the purpose there was to contact him to discuss the status of the light on Union Street, uh, and, uh, and to, again, press for, from our, from a school standpoint, the need to restore the, the, the light, not the blinking light, but as a traffic light, controlled traffic, I suspect, I'm preaching to the choir here, um, as well as those who'll be watching this on Channel Two in the future, but just to, again, we do appreciate the, uh, Department of Transportation for reaching out, they, they have been listening, and, uh, they have asked various ones of us who represent constituencies to reach out to them, so certainly I'll be doing that, and, uh, doing all we can, uh, to, to try to keep, or have that light returned to its former state as a, as a stoplight. And that's, uh, there's many things I can talk about, but we've had a long meeting already, we have a bit to go yet, but certainly, as we approach the end of the school year, uh, I appreciate, uh, the work of everybody, the teachers, uh, obviously the students, we're gonna celebrate graduation here in the, in the next, over this week, coming up here in the next few days, so, uh, just want to, again, wish, wish the classes seventeen all the best, thank their families, and again, the, the teachers and everybody else who supported all those kids. And I'll stop at that, like I said, there's many things we can talk about, but, uh, it's And I'll stop at that, like I said, there's many things we can talk about, but, uh, it's a, it's a, been a, been a good year.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So we need to go into non-public session. We've already made a motion, make the common hand.
I'll make a motion to enter into non-public session under paragraph two, section three of the RSA ninety-one A colon three of the right to know law for number two, the hiring of any person as a public employee. Number three, matters that would adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. Taking with us the superintendent?
I need, and Al and Patty, and I'm thinking, we're not doing much with finances here, so.
So superintendent, yes, the superintendent, Tom can go, but Al and Patty.
Okay. Will you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call vote.
Greg Cook?
Kim Watson? Melanie Nelson?
Jim, how are things?